I'm going to go to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda of July 15, 2013, regular meeting as presented.
A motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items. Any more comments or questions on it? I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
A motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Next we have public participation. Hello? I think you may have some news though, that maybe everybody might not know.
Was it in the paper, I think everybody knows?
I don't get the paper. Congratulations.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, next is the report of the superintendent, Mrs. Jokriss.
Yes, want to start off by pointing out the notes of appreciation in your packet and again, some hardship for members of our school family and of course, in addition to the students that we lost, we still know that people are struggling with that, want to make mention of it. Also, we have, want to be sure and announce that in August, the August board meeting, August the 19th, 2013, just prior to the regular board meeting, starting at 7 o'clock, will be our 2013 school tax rate hearing, so I want to be sure that everybody's aware of that. And then, little bit of update on summer maintenance and things that we've been doing at Bloomsdale. All of the teachers' summer maintenance requests, about 95% of them are done, Keith reports. We've ordered some materials and are waiting on some clarification from the teachers about a couple of the little things that need to be done. We completed a new chlorination and dechlorination system for the lagoon, that is all completed out there now. There's a new block wall around the lower playground and that should be finalized this week, they're almost finished with that. All the kitchen equipment, heat pumps, air handlers, AC units have been cleaned and checked and the parking lot is complete, we did some major patching and some work out there. We are going to extend that parking lot, the gravel area, and we're working on getting that done. Hopefully we have it ready by the time school starts as well. So, that's a project that PTO was helping us with and they have gotten some donations of gravel and so we're working on getting the bed done so that we can put the large rock on the bottom and then put the smaller gravel over the top, so it doesn't just all become mud. So, anyway, that is all underway. St. Jen Elementary, we had to do a complete changeover of the control system, the control panel. The HVAC system in this, on this campus is completely obsolete at this point. So, when the control panel went down for St. Jen Elementary, we had no choice but to replace it with new. You can't get the parts or the panels to replace what we have, we had to go with the new stuff. Pretty costly, but there really wasn't anything else to do. So, what we've done is removed all the old control panels, we've warehoused the ones that are still useful and still working and we've put in a new system at the elementary and we're going to save the old ones to, as these fail here, to have some backup parts because we really don't have any way of getting any others. So, that's been a major expense that was not necessarily one that was planned for this year. We were hoping that we could get through to the next bond issue before we had to do major overhaul of the HVAC system, but it's starting to nickel and dim this a little bit and this is probably more like a quarter than a nickel or a dime. So, we've had, that's finished, we're still working on getting the programming right, which is always the fine tuning and probably will still be fine tuning that once everybody gets in the classrooms and starts using it and trying to get everybody's comfort that, you know, taken care of. Again, the maintenance requests by the teachers are about 95% complete. All of the ventilators, air handlers, and AC units and chillers have been checked and cleaned and the kitchen equipment has all been checked, cleaned, and tested, so everything is ready to go there. Junior high summer maintenance is about 95% done and all their HVAC has been cleaned and tested. At the high school, they're about 30% done on the summer maintenance requests from teachers and so that's the area that is receiving the most attention right now. They've done all the cleaning of the HVAC units, air handlers, et cetera. They're going to start walls and doors in the, I guess it will be the new alt program classroom area this week. We've been putting in additional lighting on the gravel parking lot out there behind the pack and that should be done. Those were the lights that were donated by wholesome to the city and then to us. So, we've provided the manpower and et cetera for getting them set, but the equipment itself, they're really, really good, so, yeah, very nice. We're waiting on the lift to be able to finish the lights out there, so. The, well, one of the big things that we have to do every summer is the grease trap and the acid trap. That's all finished, that's been torn out and cleaned. We had to do some replacing and repair of the loose rubber roof over the, it's actually over this part right here. And, so that's been done and that, we do need to look at having some roof replacement in this area at the next bond issue, not this coming school year, but probably we'll be starting. This coming school year, we'll definitely be doing some planning and looking forward to the following year, a no tax, a decreased bond issue to handle these HVAC issues, some roofing and some windows, so. So, that's kind of looking at long-term here, but you have to get started planning. So, anyway, that's kind of where we are. As far as safety updates and the security, we're working on getting all the cameras installed and we finally have some information on the, we have two bids on the key, the card access doors so that we can keep all of our campus locked. One is a wireless system and the other is one that requires us to run a bunch of wiring. On the face of it, the wireless system looks to be more expensive, but by the time you factor in running all the conduit and the wire and new hardware for the doors that are required in this other system, they really come out to be about the same. And the wireless system, both Nancy and Keith are very much more in favor of. The wireless system, the software and everything is in the panic bar on the door. You don't have to replace your keys, I mean, your keys will still work on the knob locks and that's, I mean, that would be really, really nice. It's the, they put a little monitor thing, little box on the door and they replace the panic bar. And that, and then there's a wireless transmitter that's in the vicinity of that door and so when the key card is activated, it transmits to the panic bar and opens the door and you're in. So, very much cleaner system than having to run wire to every transmitter and wire down to the box. If the wired system was going to require some sort of post or pedestal in front of the pack because the door frames themselves are too narrow to put the hardware that's required on them. So, with the wireless system, we can keep our keys and so like, you know, if somebody, an administrator comes up in the middle of the night, they don't have their ID card with them but they got their keys in their pocket, they're still able to get in. Our fire and rescue and sheriff's department have keys and so that will still work for them. So, really, it looks at the face of it like it's a more expensive system, but I think in the end of it, Keith figures that it's really going to be about the same time you factor in all their work on the wiring. So, we're moving forward with that. We have also been talking to, we finally have gotten contact with the guy who put in the panic button system at the jail and so we're getting some estimates on having that in the offices. And the front entries should all be ready to go by the time school's ready. I don't know if all of the key card things will be ready to go by the first day of school because we had to wait so long on the bids. That last bid on the wireless system that we really wanted to see, we just got this week, or actually the end of last week, so we're not able to even get the parts ordered and stuff yet. But, that does, I mean, it'd be nice to have it all ready at the beginning and we might still, you know, there may be some places that it will be. We'll just, we'll do as much as we can and then we'll finish it up as soon as we can, so. I feel like Keith and his guys have done a great job. The cleaning of classrooms is moving along great, they're really moving quickly this year and the technology department and the custodial staff have worked so well together in, because oftentimes, technology needs to be dismantled and removed before the cleaning crew can come in and then it's all got to go back in reverse. And so, they've really worked well and communicated well this year. Brian Kreider's been very, very helpful with that, if you guys see him, pat him on the back anytime you get a chance because he really is the, he's the grease that makes that a well-oiled machine. He really is.
He's just got good energy, doesn't he?
He's very energetic, he really, he has such a commitment to this district and to making sure that everything is just right for everyone and I appreciate his work very much that way. So, any questions on any of that? Yes, sir?
How old was it, it couldn't be replaced?
I think it was about 30 years old, he said, the HVAC, it's the original stuff we put in in the, when did they, when did they air condition it? Eighties? If, I mean, the eighties makes it 30 years old, pretty near.
They were after, they were after.
Right, right, so, yes, sir?
We talked a day last year about putting on a sort of barred screen door on the back of the kitchen. Anything come of that?
We're, Keith's still trying to figure something out as what we can do there, but it's not forgotten, just there've been, the security door things and all these other things have probably taken a little priority, so I'll ask him again about that.
It's going to be the hottest part of the year when we go back.
True, it will, of course, we'll have the air on at that, yeah. So, we won't even be, it'll be really probably late October when we shut the air off, or mid-October, where it might get warm in there and they would want to open that door. So, initially, they won't have it open because the air will be on.
But after we shut that door, there's no one?
Right, right.
Any of that work with the HVAC, was that bid or we didn't have to approve any of that or how did all that work?
Actually, we, it's just parts, so really, each individual part doesn't rise to the level of being,
Taken through the board?
Right, yeah. Kind of like buying computers, we don't ask you all to approve computers because any individual computer's three, four, or $500 and so it's just because, it's the fact that there's that volume of them, so. And actually, Keith is just working with the same, he's trying to work with the same guys who have done the new additions so that the equipment is somewhat in common.
Any questions or comments? We'll move on to unfinished business, the board policy book update.
Well, I hope you enjoyed your reading. I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to go through all of that, but what I am going to do is trust that US diligent board members have read them, for one, and if you have questions, I'm definitely going to give you time to ask those. But for the general public, the things that are changing in the board policy are more based on changes in the law about certain things with bidding and construction. That was one, some legal changes that are reflected in the board policy. Some things about, oh, there's just, there's just a variety of different things. There were some things related to nursing and health services that basically amount to the fact that we will be able to keep in our nurses' offices epinephrine pens and asthma inhalers under the prescription of a doctor through our IRN and have those on hand in case of an emergency situation, whether it be for a child who has a known allergy and maybe doesn't have their own EpiPen that day. What happens frequently in the elementary is maybe you'll have a kid who knows they have asthma, they have an attack and they forgot their inhaler that day, or oops, the inhaler's empty, or, or just any number of things, a kid who's not known to have asthma can develop that. And so, we are allowed to have those on hand and the nurse is required to provide training for anyone who would be called upon to administer that. So, that's part of what's in here. Just a variety of other small things that are related to required changes mandated either by changes in court law, case law, or actual legislation. So, if you all have any specific questions, I'd really be glad to entertain them at this time, but I, I know you've read these and I don't want to make you go through each one of them.
I have a couple.
Sure, please do, no, 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 no.
No, I mean, I apologize, I can't get my packet up, but I wrote the questions down.
Here's a hard copy, Dave.
Okay, I'll come grab it, but.
Oh, thank you.
So, I think you answered the one, JHCD, so we're going to have emergency, thank you. Asthma meds on campus now? And then, JHCF, is staff training, is that annual?
Um, yes, she goes over that each year.
So, the asthma, is that just select?
Well, it's too bold. If there's a child that has asthma, that it's a known condition and they carry an inhaler on their person, the nurse goes to any of the teachers that would have that student, their classroom teacher, their special area teachers, and does a specific training and reviews their health plan because they're going to have a health plan and emergency plan based on that and she'll review it and give copies of that to those people. But the other thing that we do is a general training for all of the teachers because you don't know when some kid may have an asthma attack that didn't ever have it before. And so, maybe they're outside on recess and this happens and so what we do is more general training to signs and symptoms and what to do and that is reviewed every year with our staff.
Certain parts on that are of need and no basis.
Yes. Yes, well, when you, when it's a specific child and it's their specific health issues, you don't review that with staff in general, unless it is something like, you know, perhaps we try to give training on seizure disorders, so if a child's out in the cafeteria and has a seizure, all the teachers kind of know what to do. Yes, and so you try to make sure that the ones that have specific information about specific children are the ones that are dealing with them on a regular basis.
The cell phone policy, we don't provide any cell phones?
No. And that's why, that's why it's all crossed out except for just that one little part.
And then, are bus drivers accountable to board education policy? I apologize, I don't know the answer to that question.
The bus drivers are not our employees, but the bus company basically says that we have the right to ask them to dismiss someone and so, yes, in essence, they are help to board policy because we can ask if they're not following policy that they be dismissed.
Do they have their own cell phone policy though? I guess that's what I was coming to.
I'll have to ask Mr. Jokriss about that. I know that they're not supposed to be on it while they're driving.
Right, that's what I was concerned about. Are my questions there?
That's fine, any other questions? Anybody?
Anybody wondering, do you think?
Oh, yeah, these will be posted, as soon as they're passed, they'll be updated and Nancy will get them all up on the website before school starts, so. We do use, for anybody who wants to know, the Missouri School Board Association Policy Service and they send us the required and suggested updates. Some are required updates because of changes in law and some are just suggestions based on best practice. So, that's how we determine what policies need to be changed for the bus park.
We'll move on to new business?
We do, yeah, we kind of do.
I'm reading the recommendation, not the rest of it. Move to approve the proposed policy procedure changes and updates as presented.
Okay, a motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Thank you, Barry. Okay, next is new business, first is the food service bids.
Okay, we have a bid for milk and for bread and we included the bid sheets and you'll notice that we had two bids for milk, one is from Prairie Farm Dairy and the other is from Chester Dairy and the, I'm recommending the Prairie Farm bid, though it is slightly higher. The Chester Dairy gave us what's called an escalator-deescalator bid, which basically means they can change the amounts they're charging you based on most anything, packaging costs, fuel costs, raw material costs, anything. And so, really, this bid is good for the month of July. So, I didn't really want to roll that dice, I'd kind of like to see it locked in all year, so.
Last year said group third year from Milk Parlor, but there's no bid.
Right, they are no longer in the school business. They've decided they're not going to service schools anymore because they, their supplier has quit supplying and they would have to go, they would have to get it from much further away and they're afraid the quality would not be acceptable, so they chose not to bid. Yeah, because Cheryl actually called and asked because they were good to work with and she hated losing them, so. But we will be going with Prairie Farms, that's, to me, they, Chester Dairy did not give us, we asked for a firm bid, so they didn't give us the type of bid that we requested. And then on the bread company, we have one bid. So, we will be going with Flowers Baking Company, that's who we've been with in the past, they've given us excellent service, they worked with us when we, when the students were very unhappy with the type of wheat bread we were having to use and the buns and the buns with the sticks and the oats and the whatever on top that they didn't like. They searched around and found something different for us and so we will be going with that recommendation this year as well.
Are those, the buns went up, are those larger quantity sizes, do you know, or?
On which ones?
Oh, I don't know, I think it was hamburger buns and the hot dog buns, I was just looking at last year's, I guess it's, I don't know, larger quantity?
I don't know, I didn't bring them here with me.
Just that much fabric, you just have one bid?
We only had the one bid, yeah. And, you know, it's funny, we did have two last year, but Interstate went out of business and a lot of the men's area was with Interstate and they had no bread service in the middle of school year last year. And so, they were calling around and saying, hey, who do y'all get your breads? So, I would imagine that Flowers probably picked up some business, so.
I move to accept the following bids for the 2013-14 school year. For milk, Prairie Farms, a one-year bid, and bread, Flowers Baking Company, a one-year bid. A motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye. Opposed? Motion against. Next, the pest control bids, Ms. Jokriss?
We did have two bids, one from Presto X and one from Camerons. Camerons is half of what Presto X is, although Presto did give us a three-year bid. Camerons, we've been with them for more than three years and this has been their bid price all the time, so we haven't had an increase from them in years and they've done, they give us great service, we have no reason to leave them, really, so.
They do both campuses?
They do everything, they do every building on this campus and Bloomsdale. They didn't even do a price increase when we added the pack and two new leads at the elementarys, so I can't complain with them.
And they do a good job.
Yeah.
Move to accept the following, 2013-14 school year, Camerons termite pest for one year.
A motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye. Opposed? Motion against. Next, I'm sorry.
Everybody's just giving one new bid, but you're asking for more, they just won't get it out longer?
They don't want to be tied into a little deal. We do request one and three and most of the time we just get one.
Next is the refuge bids.
Yes, except for the refuse bids and we do get three-year contracts from Republic and this is the, going into our third year, so that I just ask that you approve that we continue with them for the third year of this contract.
I move to accept the following bid for the 2013-14 school year. Republic Services, third year of a three-year bid. A motion in second, I'll favor by saying aye. Opposed? Motion against. Next is our food service report for 2012-13 school year.
Um, if you look at the information sheets that are with that, you'll see the 12-13 total expenses were $972,000, down a little from the last two years, so our expenses, we cut back on some things. Cheryl does a superb, superb job of being efficient and planning her menus, planning her ordering. I mean, she is, she is down to the bun, if you will, and does an excellent job with that. She also is very conscientious about the need for additional employees. She makes sure that everybody, if she asks me to hire an additional person, she really needs it. She's a very hard worker herself and she expects that level of work from her staff and they do a wonderful job. We did not replace Ms. Palmer when she passed away. Cheryl felt like that we could move one of our cooks from town and use our three-hour subs and not need to necessarily replace that, so she worked it out and she first asked me, could we just try it and then she told me it'd be fine. So, she's very, very cost efficient with what she does and I appreciate her work tremendously on that. Our total receipts were $984,717, that's down a little bit from last year, but our expenses were also down, so we wound up with a positive balance of $12,682. Even with that, we, one of the other things that makes our costs go down a little bit and our receipts be down a little bit is that our enrollment is falling across the district too, so we're not feeding as many kids. That's, that impacts us in a lot of ways, it's kind of positive in the cafeteria because you're not trying to feed as many people, but when you talk about revenues later on the state level, that hits us because if we get less state funding because it's based on our enrollment. So, we are, over the last three or four years, have been dropping. So, we'll talk about that when we get to budget next month, but just a preview. So, even though, and then if you look on, you'll see our, what we, our snack, which is the after-school snack program that you see there for 11, 12, and 12, 13. And then we did not have summer school lunch this year, okay? So we, we may, and, and Cheryl's in favor of this as well, go back to offering breakfast and lunch in summer school for extended school year kids next year. So anyway, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But if you go back then to the recommendation page, um, last year we wound up with a negative balance of five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven in red. Uh, this year we're in the black, that's a good thing. But we are still driven by a federal mandate that lunch prices for, for fully paid lunches and breakfasts have to cover, uh, at least what the feds are reimbursing us. So in other words, we can't be making too much money off of the federal dollars that's coming into the cafeteria. That's, it's a law and we can't get around that. They did give us the latitude to, uh, just not make the increase all in one year because that would have been really tough. So they have allowed us to show progress over time. And since we were in the red last year, we did increase ten cents. Since we finished positive this year, I'm just increasing five cents. That's, that satisfies the federal mandate, but I think doesn't create an, hopefully, an exorbitant increase on our, our families. So, um, reduced lunches stay the same prices and of course, free lunch is still free lunch. But, um, the full pay student and adult breakfast and lunch, I'm recommending a five cent increase.
So if our balances are even higher next year, will they, meaning...
Well, I would hope that...
What can you do with the extra money?
What's the fed's, what's the fed's bid warrant?
Two dollars and fifty-eight cents for lunch.
Is the federal, that's real, isn't it?
That's overall.
There's some districts that climb a lot more than us, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's districts in the mental area that are considerably lower than us and are, are really having to take big increases each year. So I feel fortunate that we don't have to push so hard and I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe they'll say, well, you know, if you're running in the black, you don't have to make an increase maybe next year or something like that, so... They don't seem to care whether or not you're running in the black. They just care if you're making too much money off of the federal subsidy. That's really all their concern.
So it comes back to positive to the tune of twenty or twenty-five thousand next year we made?
Well, we may just as a board say no and deal with... The problem is, though, you can risk losing all your federal subsidy if you don't do what you're supposed to do. Yes, if you're not shown to make an effort. I would argue that we made that effort.
Absolutely.
And that we are not able to make the effort quite so hard.
We'll be far ahead of a lot of others.
Yeah, yeah.
Why make a comparison?
You can reinvest, kind of give them a good part, you know, for higher quality, different, higher nutritionally valued food or something.
Well, and, and being able to, uh, you know, have better equipment and, and that kind of thing, yes. That's, we do try to, because we're, our aim has never been to have that be a money-making program. It's been, it's, the aim has always been to just be a break even. And with the district supplying the utilities and the maintenance and the, the lunch program simply covering all the other, uh, the, the salaries and the supplies and food and stuff like that. So, uh, you know, we, it's never been our intention to, to be a money-making arm of the district. Uh, but, um, you know, some people have gone to contracted food service, which is very much a money-making project. So I, I don't wanna really, I don't wanna go in that direction and so, um, that's why I, I think five cents shows an effort without being exorbitant, so...
Is there just twenty-one cents a week for, for child?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes. Yes, sir.
I was surprised, that last year's reduced shows forty and fifty and this year thirty and forty, is that, am I...
Um, these are the numbers that, uh, that Cheryl gave me, so it may have changed.
Okay.
I'll double check that, but...
But those don't, I guess, it shows they're going back, it could be wrong, but they're not going up five cents.
They're not going up, no, because the reduced amount is mandated by the, that's the free and reduced lunch program. So, um, I'll double check that.
Okay. Move to approve the following food service prices for the 2013-2014 school year as listed here.
Second. I have a motion and a second on favor of vice and I.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Before we go into closed session, um, can we, Ms. Chalkers, would you like to say something a little bit about our students that are going to Las Vegas?
Yeah.
I mean, Las Vegas.
Los Angeles, Los Angeles.
That's pretty exciting. We, we have a group of young ladies, the ones who, uh, created the video. It's the Noble America Video Challenge, I think is what it's called. And it was an online, uh, contest that these girls created a video with the help and support of the community and the student body to express their feelings about, um, not bullying and about, um, being who you are and being accepted for who you are is really what was the message of their video. It was really well done and, um, they have, they're one of the top four, uh, in the nation, apparently. And so have gotten to go out to Los Angeles to the awards ceremony. And, uh, I think there's also some leadership conference type things that will go on for them while they're out there. And I know that they requested some monetary support from various businesses and were, as always, our, our community has supported them and helped them out and helped their parents in defraying the expenses of, of going. And really appreciate all those who did that and we're very excited for those young...
And the neat thing about it, they were telling us that they'll go to these, or they'll go to the meetings and stuff and they'll be able to bring this back to the student body.
Right.
And hopefully they'll be able to, to give them, teach them some stuff, so...
Make a presentation for them, yes.
Right.
We're gonna do some online voting, is that...
I don't know how that works. I, I don't think that they already did the online voting. And now they're going to an awards ceremony.
They're going out there to get their award.
So I guess, so they're in the top four, that's what I, that's what I know.
Where do they go?
I think it's August.
Eighth or ninth?
Right before school starts, I know, yeah. So they've been working hard to, uh...
It's on the, it's on the chamber thing, that's where, right?
Oh, sometimes.
Okay. It's on the chamber.
Anything else to talk about?
I'm sure there is.
Well, it's just exciting.
It is very exciting. I'm very proud of all of them. Because that's just something they chose to do on their own. That was just something they felt was important and did it all, all on their own, at their own initiative. And, and I really also appreciated the way their, their classmates and the whole student body got involved and jumped into the spirit of the thing. And I think the T-shirts they got, uh, they got some help with the, the financing of the T-shirts that they used in their video and, and so, you know, it, it has been a community effort as well as, as our community is so good about doing, uh, supporting our kids when they're, uh, when they're doing this kind of thing. I'm, I'm always pleased with that.
For some of them that don't, the audience that doesn't know that, uh, they had T-shirts that on one side was the bully word and they went through a ser, or a, a, a... It was a, it was a whole video, but anyway, then after that, um, they took that T-shirt off and had another one on that was the opposite. So if it was ugly, it was pretty, it was fat, it was skinny. So it had something that was really, really well presented in the video.
So we invite them to the next school board meeting if they're back in time?
I have problems doing that, be glad to.
Yes, and they'll have to give us an update on what they're...
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would be, yeah, let's, let's do that. We may, maybe even be able to play their video or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's plan to do that.
I apologize, mine is not, I can't get mine on. No. Is it chamber one? Are you, it was... Hey, Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote following the regular open meeting of, on August nineteen, two thousand and thirteen, to be held in the R. David Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items business. Legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, purchase, sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents relating to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed, individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, records relating to municipal hotlines established for the reporting of abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, existing or proposed security system and structural plans of district property, records that, records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components of the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access code, or authorization code that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move to notice this meeting and its tenant of the generally posted required by law.
Second. I have a motion and a second, roll call, Ed Bonner?
Yes.
Dave Bova?
Yes.
Charlie Crowder?
Yes.
Don Duncy?
Yes.
Perry McDaniel, yes. Martha Bresinger?
Yes.
Rick Brulow?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven oh.
I need to go into closed session after, so we have a roll-in after short break. I have a motion and a second on favor of vice and I.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Hi, thank you for watching Channel Seven ninety-eight.
Thank you for watching Channel Seven ninety-eight.
Hi, thank you very much for watching Channel Seven ninety-eight.